Sorry, couldn't find the mute button. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, you can.
Yes.
Thank you so much. This is a request for approval of Glen Eagle Dental Plan Development Preliminary Final PD Site Plan. The site is adjacent to Struthers Road behind the Fairville Inn, which is within the Monument Ridge Commercial Subdivision. The site is bounded by Reagan Heights to the north and Struthers Road to the west and south. The project is .709 acres in size. It is part of the Monument Ridge Approved Preliminary PD Site Plan. The approved preliminary PD site plan indicates area to be developed as commercial. Tribeview Metro District will provide both water and wastewater services for all development within the Monument Ridge. Existing surrounding use include Fairfield Inn and Suites by Marriott, Monument Ridge, future Monument Ridge Apartments, and Chase Bank. The preliminary PD, preliminary final PD site plan shows the site as 3,186 square foot, single-story dental office. There's no, no changes are proposed to the four existing access points, two along Baptist Road and two along Struthers Road. Glen Eagle Dental is an existing practice, practice located, looking to relocate in Monument. The office will be opened Monday through Thursday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. with 18 total parking spaces. The transportation memo was conducted on September 10th, 2020 and revised on December 21st, 2020. The memo showed the land use change from the original Monument Ridge Developments Traffic Impact Study of 5,000 square foot general office building to 3,186 square foot dental office, with 109 new external vehicle trips on the average weekday. The morning peak hour will be from 6:30 a.m. to 8:30 a.m. with eight vehicles entering the site and two vehicles exiting the site. The afternoon peak hour will be from 4:15 to 6:15 p.m. with four vehicles entering the site and nine vehicles exiting the site. Glen Eagle Dental Lighting is compliant with dark skies. There will be, there will be building exit lighting at three entry and exit on motion sensor. Three existing streetlights, two light poles will be added. One fixture will be dust to dawn for security purposes, and the other lights will be turned off at 10:00 p.m. Sorry about that. The next slides are the elevations of the dental office. This is the west elevation, south and north elevation, and east elevation. Again, these are a list of our referrals for reviewed and commented on the project. And staff recommends approval of Glen Eagle Dental Preliminary Final PD Site Plan based on the staff report findings that the proposed development complies with all standards and criteria for approval. And staff is here to answer any questions, and so is Bruce Barr from Art C. Klein Construction, who's representing Dr. Wanacott, who's the dentist for this practice.
All right, thank you, Steph. Mr. Barr, if you'd like to add anything?
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for taking the time to hear our presentation. I'm going to keep it short. We were provided a lot that really is a difficult configuration, had 20% of burden for the construction of Reagan Heights that Mike Wanacott is inheriting. And I just think it was a good fit. It's a good transitional zone between the hotel and residential properties. And I think we've met all the criteria, and we support the staff recommendation, and also respectfully request the Commission's approval for Dr. Wanacott.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. I'll now open for public comments. Drew, are you seeing anyone who would like to make a comment?
At this time, Mr. Chairman, I do not have any hands, but we like, before, we'll probably want to give it a second just in case. We still have two people in the attendee pool.
Sure thing. We'll hold for 30 seconds, let's say.
No change, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So having no public comment, I will go ahead and close public comment section. And I'll open it up for the Commissioners. Any questions or comments?
Well, I'll go ahead and start. This is Commissioner White. I do have a couple of questions. I checked out and saw the amount of grade that is on that site and recognize how difficult it would be for construction. I saw that there was going to be some raising of the facility that was going to be necessary in order to facilitate the gravity flow for sewer. And how much is, is that raising going to be in order to make that happen?
Well, good catch, but unfortunately, the sewer was brought in only 54 inches deep where it enters our site. The site has a 10% slope. We raised the finished floor of the building two feet from the approximate dead center where it sits today, and we were only able to obtain 18 inches of cover over the sanitary line, and Tribeview rejected that notion. So as a result, we have been forced to go into a duplex sewage ejection pump, and it will have a two-inch force main, and it will be pumping sewage up to the stub inlet that exists right as Reagan, right at the entrance that's existing into Reagan, off of Reagan Heights.
Okay, so no longer going to be raising the site then? I mean, you use a force main?
So we're still raising the site for a couple of reasons. One, you can see from the site plan configuration, we needed the ability to slow down water. You've been around here, we get some good range. We did not want a 10% slope all the way in the front door. Granted, we got a front door and a back door, but we did not want to have automatic cleaning services. So we have still raised that floor for two reasons. One, to give it protection from storms. And two, we have handicap parking spaces that the slopes cannot exceed 2% from the parking space to the front door. All of that is what it took to make the site ADA compliant as well.
That makes sense. So will the, the facility be on grade with the parking lot, or at least within 2%?
I'm going to say the first half of the parking lot, when you come in off of Reagan Heights, is about the approximate configuration of the lay of the land today. And then we actually extended on the west-facing walls. We just left the concrete foundation walls exposed and we're extending the rock down to the ground. So two feet of that wall, which makes the building look taller than it really is, is actually concrete foundation wall. We are leaving the grade alone. We did not want to increase the slope from the base of the building wall as it falls off to the west into the regional detention pond.
Okay, so will the parking lot be homogeneous grade, or will it be tiered at all?
No, it's, it's all one homogeneous grade, but the lower lot that's facing into the building is all closer to the 2% to 5% parking spaces. We wanted, those are the high-use ones for the customers, those are the flat stalls. The ones that you come in by the trash enclosure, those have a 5% to 8% cross-slope, and so those are the staff parking spaces up there.
Okay, that makes sense. And then as far as the force main, is that going to be an above-ground lift station? How are you facilitating the, the pumping of the sewage uphill?
Right, so it, the way that system works is there's two pumps, they go in rotation. One acts as a failsafe in the event there is a problem with the other one. That all fits into a three-foot diameter pit. That's about four feet deep. The sewage from the building goes into that pit, and when the float goes up, just like a sump pump, if you've got one at home, it ejects that in a force main and sends it uphill. So that is in a mechanical room along with some of the other building facilities inside the building.
And backup power? Are you going to have a battery generator?
At this point, we have a backup battery system, which would allow that pump to run. You know, I can't answer how many times, but probably half a dozen times. The bottom line is we've informed Dr. Wanacott, if the power goes out, he knows he's out of business, he can't operate as a dentist when the lights and his dentistry equipment doesn't work. We've told that's not, we've told him that's not the time to go do dishes. So it does take some onus and ownership from the landowner to understand that they are not on a gravity system. And we have done our best to educate Dr. Mike on, you know, the boundaries that he's going to have to establish for the staff and employees.
Okay. And then that, that design includes a one-way check valve so that you don't get flow from the...
Yeah, there's two check valves in there, absolutely.
Okay. All right. And the only other question I had, so I took note of the dark sky compliant lighting. Are there any exterior lights, other than the exit lights on the building itself, that would comply with dark, dark side, the dark sky ordinance? Or is the building going to be dark at night?
No, the building will not be dark at night. So on the west elevation, on the south end, there is a four-foot overhang that overhangs that large span of glass. There is actually some soffit lights that will light straight down over those doors. That's the, the doors on the far right of your screen. And then there are some lights, the four windows on the west elevation that you see. There are some ground lights that light up the wall, the bottom of the wall along the base of that building as well. Those lights are directly focused beams to be between the windows just for some architectural lighting. They do not face the sky, they illuminate the wall only.
Great. I personally believe lighting is very important on a building at night. Just having a big dark mass is not attractive, so I'm glad you have that, that consideration.
Yeah, the doctor was concerned without knowing the neighborhood that if any activities happened in that detention pond, not that you like to think people like to hang out there, but we wanted to make sure, since we really don't have a neighbor there looking out for them and security can't get there, that we thought it would, in our best interest, to protect that with some illumination.
Absolutely. So security and architectural amenity.
Absolutely.
As far as your customer base, do you envision the Monument Ridge Apartments being a big source of your customer base? Or are you bringing customers with you from your existing location, or both?
Well, so I only know about Mike's practice, what he's told me. So he's on Glen Eagle Drive, he's not too far away. He is straight down the road from here. It is his intent that his customers follow him to this new location where he is a tenant. Absolutely, he is hoping that when Ed gets that big apartment complex built, he is hoping that he will pick up some customers, some clients and patients, because it's understanding there's a large population that comes, goes from that proposed development on Reagan Heights. So convenience is definitely there, so we hope so.
Yeah, and have you guys thought through that in terms of, I mean, it'd be fantastic to have it be walkable where somebody's in those apartments and they can walk to their dentist appointment. Have you looked at how maybe that development might connect pedestrian-wise to make it walkable?
Well, we are completing the sidewalk along Reagan Heights, and we do have a walk that links Reagan Heights to the sidewalk that extends in front of our building. So we have a lot, we're, we're, we're working within the guidelines that Ed elsewhere set us in the, in the covenants and CCNRs to provide that walkability. We have not specifically looked at the plans that have been submitted and approved for that apartment complex, but if they have that same continuity in sidewalks, it should all be connected.
Okay, great. All right, well, I don't think I have any more questions, Mr. Barr. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Any other Commissioners? All right. Going once, going twice. Having heard no other Commissioners with questions or comments, I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion on this proposal. Would anyone like to provide it?
I'll, I'll put up the motion. This is Steve King. I move that the Planning Commission recommend approval of Glen Eagle Dental Preliminary Final PD Site Plan based on the staff report findings that the proposed development complies with all standards and criteria for approval.
Second, this is Martin Traheal.
Commissioner Eric Light.
Approved.
Commissioner Steve King.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Bill Lewis.
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Sean White.
Yes.
Commissioner Martin Traheal.
Yes.
And Chairman Chris Wahomey.
Yes.
And it's been approved 6-0.
All right, thank you, and I believe our third proposal to hear tonight, the Village at Jackson Creek Preliminary Site Plan. Staff?
Sorry, getting used to the format of where to share from. Hi again. Request for approval of Village at Jackson Creek Plan Development Preliminary PD Site Plan and Rezone. The project site is located along Jackson Creek Parkway between Harness and Cloverleaf Roads. The site is bounded by Jackson Creek Parkway to the east and I-25 to the west. The project site is about 47 acres in size. The site is vacant and is predominantly zoned planned industrial development. The applicant would like to rezone from planned industrial development to planned development and establish a mixed-use development. A small portion of the site is part of Monument Marketplace North. Tribeview Metro District will provide both water and wastewater services for all development within Village at Jackson Creek. Existing surrounding uses include Jackson Creek Senior Living, Walmart, and Future Freedom Express Car Wash. The potential uses in Phase 1 is multifamily residential, which is an area P. Area A through O would be potentially retail, grocery, restaurant, medical office building, hotel, or office buildings as well. And these are all potential uses. Access points. The primary access is from Jackson Creek Parkway onto westbound extension of Harness and Cloverleaf Roads. These intersections will potentially be full movement and signalized in the future when the signal warrants are met. As Harness and Cloverleaf Roads head west, they will conjoin to the proposed roundabout and new public road, Grand Village Drive, which is continued, which will continue to a second roundabout. Please note that the location of driveways and rightaways at intersections will be determined with the final PD site plans and construction drawings submitted. The Traffic Impact Study was conducted on October 20th, 2020 and revised on December 28th, 2020. The study concluded that there would be 11,270 vehicle trips on the average weekday. The morning peak hour will be from 6:30 a.m. to 8:30 a.m. with 290 vehicles entering the site and 240 vehicles exiting the site. The afternoon peak hour will be from 4:15 to 6:15 p.m. with 468 vehicles entering the site and 499 vehicles exiting the site. The traffic impact study findings continued on Harness and Cloverleaf Roads along Jackson Creek Parkway will be signalized in the future when the signal warrants are met. The level of service prior to signalization, if these two intersections don't get signalized, will be level of service F. After they are signalized, the level of service will be B. And these are a list of referrals who reviewed and commented on the project. And staff recommends approval of Village at Jackson Creek Preliminary PD Site Plan and Rezone based on the staff report findings that the proposed development complies with all standards and criteria for approval. Next, Brett Benke, who's representing Jackson Creek Land Company, will present next.
Thank you, Debbie. Drew, please allow me to share my screen.
Yes, there should be coming up in just a second.
All right, good evening, Planning Commissioners and everyone listening in. I'm Brett Benke, I'm with Creekside Developers, not Jackson Creek Land Company, actually, but Creekside Developers. And I'm here tonight to discuss our project, the Village at Jackson Creek. As Debbie mentioned, we are just east of I-25 and west of Jackson Creek Parkway, directly across the street from Jackson Creek Senior Living, My Storage at Jackson Creek. And then north of Monument Marketplace, the Walmart Home Depot Kohl Shopping Center, and then directly bordering us is Monument Marketplace North Development, where Debbie mentioned the Freedom Express Car Wash is going here on that for the south lot. We are bounded here on the south side by a wetlands area. And then, so that'll be kind of a preserved open space. As well as on the north side, this is the Prebels Mouse Habitat. Again, open space, so. So Harness Road will be extended as a part of this project west from Jackson Creek Parkway, as well as Cloverleaf will be extended to the west, where they come together at a roundabout, as Debbie mentioned, creating a Grand Village Drive. In a Grand Village Drive, we really see it as kind of the main street for this overall development. And just to mention that all three of those roads will be dedicated to and maintained by the Tribeview Metro District. So what we are asking for, or seeking approval of tonight, is rezoning the subject property from PID to PD, and then approval of this, the Village at Jackson Creek Preliminary PD Site Plan. So just to note, I will be sharing some conceptual plans and images with you here shortly, and then just kind of showing what we are envisioning for this overall development. But just a reminder, these are conceptual images, and final PDs and plaits will come before you for each future phase of development. So the existing zoning is currently PID, see us here on the map. PID allows for, you know, food processing, lumber and storage yards, manufacturing and processing, animal and animal hoarding clinics and so forth. And I believe we can all, all agree that that's not the highest and best use or the most desired use for this area. So what we're proposing is, is more similar to Regency Park PCD, which, which allows for, allows for retail, commercial, office, libraries, community centers, hospitals, banks, drugstores, fire and police stations, et cetera. In addition, similar to Regency Park PMD, the PD also allows for multifamily and senior housing. And then additionally, we would like to add brew pubs and distilleries, and those are not currently in the zoning code, to my knowledge. So as Debbie mentioned, we are within the Tribeview Metro District's boundaries, which are shown here, our site, and then the red is Tribeview's boundaries. So our vision, our vision is to create a mixed-use destination concept that is much more connected, dense, and walkable than developments that currently exist in Monument. There will be enhanced, well-lit and landscaped roadways and streetscapes that are walker and biker friendly. It will provide opportunities to live, work, and play all in the same neighborhood. There will be community gathering spaces, hopefully with a library and senior center, Class A multifamily and senior housing, restaurants, retailers, and employment. So just to point out, this is taken from the view of like Jackson Creek Parkway facing west. This would be the intersection of Harness Road and Jackson Creek Parkway. This portion is the Monument Marketplace North, which is not a part. But this would be Harness and Cloverleaf connecting at a roundabout, continuing down the Grand Village Drive. And so as Debbie mentioned, the first phase, what, what we are envisioning is a Class A multifamily, a three, three-story walk-up garden-style apartment complex, currently planned to be 252 units. That's what we're working on at the moment, along with in discussions with, we've hired a local brokerage to represent us in seeking other retail and commercial uses. So we've been talking to several grocers. We've been talking to the library, the Pike's Peak Library District for quite some time now, and, and yeah, hope to, hope to land some of these uses. This is another view coming together at that first roundabout where Harness and Cloverleaf connect, facing southwest. Here, again, with the apartments and the clubhouse. Here, again, with the apartments and the clubhouse. This is a rendered version of the, uh, of the library, concept of the library, with what we, what we foresee is some civic in, uh, some civic space, potentially an amphitheater. And then this would be that, uh, wetlands area to the south. Um, that would be, uh, open space and preserved. Uh, one more slightly different, uh, conceptual rendering. Again, this is a, but what we foresee as the apartments. And at roundabout, retail, again, the library. So some of the, uh, some of the projects that we've looked at as, as influencers for, for our project here are, if you've been to Festival Park in Castle Rock, which is kind of a really neat gathering space. They have farmer's markets, um, and I believe a, a small little amphitheater and live music and little park space. Uh, this is a, a new, uh, Denver Public Library. And then some Class A multifamily, uh, that's similar to what we are envisioning. And then I'd love to see it, a public market-type concept, um, with, you know, local, local restaurateurs that, uh, could have their various booths and, uh, and so forth, and, and maybe even local goods like you see at, you know, the Castle Rock, the, the Emporium or the, uh, the barn there, so. So I'm sure you guys will have questions, and, um, I'm really excited to be a, a part of this project. And, and so I, I hope you guys agree, it'll be a great addition and, uh, great addition for the community. So, uh, thank you for your time and consideration and request that you approve this project.
Thank you, and I will, uh, open for public comments. Drew, how are we looking, uh, virtually?
Uh, we only have one person in the attendee pool, and I have seen no change in them this entire meeting. But I'll keep an eye on them, uh, and we have no hands up this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'll give it a handful of, uh, more seconds, and then, uh, we'll move forward.
Just a, a comment, the attendee is, uh, our civil engineer.
Oh, well then, perfect. Do you, uh, do you want me to try to put him up, or?
If something comes about, uh, that he can speak to.
Okay.
All right.
And, um, then, yeah, Mr. Chairman, we should be good to go.
All right, thank you, Drew. Uh, having heard no, uh, public comments, we'll move forward with Commissioner questions, comments on this project. Um, I just opened the floor.
I'm happy to start. This is Steve King. I have a couple of questions for staff first, so Debbie. This is currently zoned PID.
Correct, Regency Park PID.
Right. What is the height limit on the PID currently?
I believe it's 90 feet, um, and that's what the applicant is gonna stick with.
Is there residential in that PID allowed?
There's, there, they would like to rezone to PD, so they can do residential. And the current PID zone residential is not allowed.
Okay. So of those 32 items that are listed of uses that they want to allow, is, is my understanding that everything on there with the exception of microbrews and residential is currently allowed?
It's allowed in the PCD, um, zone, plan commercial zone, and, and that's the type of uses they would like to use.
Okay, so pretty much all of that is, is wanting to be incorporated into this that isn't already allowed, correct?
Currently is PID.
Okay, I just want to be clear. And regarding a couple of these setbacks, oh, there's a 20-foot setback from, um, Jackson Creek Parkway. But I'm assuming that there's also a right-of-way currently along Jackson Creek Parkway. Do you know how far that is to the property line?
I don't know off the top of my head with that, but when they do submit their construction drawings, that will have to be taken into consideration.
Okay.
Unless Brian knows the right-of-way.
I'm trying to think, right there in front of that site, I know, uh, in working on the Monument Marketplace North Development, it's about 10, about 10 feet right-of-way, because the sidewalk is at some points in the right-of-way, and some points it's, uh, in the private property.
Okay, so, so now, so maybe we're talking 30 feet from Jackson Creek Parkway is what you're proposing?
That's correct. And Jackson Creek Parkway is a, is a classified as a minor collector, and that's the setback, uh, stated in PCD and PID is 20 feet.
Okay, so, so I guess I'll continue asking you a couple of questions. So, um, this conceptual drawing, I get that it's conceptual. The problems that I have, the main, well, one of the main problems that I have is you're asking for 32 units per acre for the residential. And the best I can tell, North Gate, Interquest, Briar Gate, none of those areas have anything that's that dense. So you have to look at it from a point of view that what if everything falls apart? I've seen, I've seen this happen before. Right now, there's not a lot of need for retail, commercials difficult. Um, I've, I've seen projects that are required to do mixed use, and what they end up doing is put one floor of retail, stack them with apartments on, up, and don't care if they rent the retail space out, because they've got all the apartments. So theoretically speaking, if we allow you to have 32 units per acre, there's 1,500 units that could go into this place, and, um, I know what you're gonna say, but I have to look at it differently than you're looking at it. Because there's, there's nothing here that states any max, maximum floor areas or maximum units or, or anything along that way. And this whole corridor is turning into a corridor of apartments now, and, um, I, I, the property to the north that they got 25 units per acre, I had a lot of heartburn with that. I have a lot of heartburn with 32 units per acre. Can you kind of talk me through that?
Well, sure. Um, what I can talk you through is what we have planned in the initial phase, which is 252 units on 13.4 acres, which is, uh, approximately 19 units per acre. We have no intention of developing 1,500 units on that, on that site. I think the, the higher density, you know, I think is, is mainly, uh, important for us, potentially for senior housing. Like Jackson Creek Senior Living, for example, is in the, the upper twenties. Please keep in mind, I mean, that project has over 50% common area. So, you know, that if we did another senior project in developing Jackson Creek Senior Living, we, we realized the need or the desire, the demand for, uh, independent living. Uh, you know, senior housing, something to bridge the gap between the vistas and, and, uh, Jackson Creek Senior Living. So, you know, we could see a, a senior project going in there that's more of a senior flats-type project, and that could be a little bit more dense. They enjoy this walkable community near a senior center, near a library. Um, you know, that's our, our hope, so, um, I mean, I, I see what you're saying, and I can appreciate that. All I can tell you is we have no, no intention of building 1,500 units.
Okay, um, also, I have issue, and, and I know other commissioners do, with the height. Monument's a small town. Best I can tell, the YMCA building's probably 50 feet tall, max. And so that's double the height of that building, which drastically changes the skyline in Monument and takes it from a small-town feel into more of a, kind of an urban set, setting. What, what are you planning on building that's 90 feet tall?
Can't say that we have plans to build anything that's 90 feet tall. The PID allowed for zoning up to, up to 90 feet. Uh, we've even conceded to, on that, and took the 90 feet and had it be only 90 feet up, uh, 750 feet off of I-25. And so there's about 2,000 feet from I-25 to Jackson Creek Parkway. So we have, you know, conceded to only maybe allowing up to 90 feet, 750 feet off of I-25. Again, I, I'm not sure what we would develop or sell land to be developed. Um, that would be 90 feet, but potentially some sort of hospitality, um.
Okay, and, and, and that 750 feet off I-25 is, it's really 750 feet from the property line, correct? Not from the road?
Sorry, I, I will double-check.
Because I, I don't know how much right-of-way they have there either, but I'm sure it's, there's some.
I would double-check the wording in the PD here, so. In the PD, it does say 750 feet, uh, off I-25 is how we worded it.
So is that off the asphalt or off of the property line?
Uh, property line, yeah.
That would be the end of the right-of-way.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. That's all the questions I have right now. I might think of something else, but I'll pass it on to somebody else.
I'd, I'd like to jump in. This is, uh, Commissioner Will Hume. Uh, this question is first for staff. I'm a little confused. What happened with the, the Ferrari films? I thought this, is this not part of that, uh, rezoning?
No. They're in Monument Marketplace North.
So it's adjacent?
Adjacent to it, and it's, that project is on hold right now for them.
All right, and so back to the applicant. Can you just describe how this proposal fits into the Monument, or the Town of Monument's comprehensive plan?
Sure. So the comprehensive plan currently shows this area as mixed use. Like half of it closer to Jackson Creek Parkway as mixed use, and half of it, uh, closer to I-25 as, I forget if it's called Business or Employment Center. But, so I would say it fits very well into the comprehensive plan.
So in regards to like small-town feel or the idea of, um, trails, parks, can you tell me? Uh, I understand it's a 13.4 acre. Uh, how much is dedicated to parks?
Well, out of the, the 13.4 acres is the, is the apartment site.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The overall site is 46.9. The site itself, we have not, uh, we're not dedicating any open space as a part of that. We have been in communication with the Library District to dedicate land to them to bu, build a facility. We are also have been in, uh, communication with the Town of Monument, uh, to, uh, plan this civic space and amphitheater and so forth, which we would be happy to, to donate a portion of land for that. Uh, the land to the south is wet, a wetlands area, and that's open space. And then the land to the north is that Prebble's Mouse Habitat, which is also open space. So we kind of fit in between two open spaces.
All right, and, uh, how about trails? Are there any trails?
There are what we're calling streetscapes. And so these streetscapes will be, uh, they'll have sidewalks and heavily landscaped areas. And so they're just sidewalks that, um, connect all, all roadways to Jackson Creek Parkway and, and so forth. A trail, we are planning as a part of our apartment project to have a, a walking trail around the, um, exterior and through the, the project. The sidewalks, there'll also be, you know, these are enhanced with what we envisioned Grand Village Drive to be a, a paved sidewalk, um, section with, uh, seating areas, benches, and, uh, landscape planters and so forth.
I understand that part of the, uh, proposed uses could include a hotel motel extended stay. Is that right?
Yes, yeah, that is, um, and I, I want to say that matches, uh, the PCD language, um, so.
Right, yeah, I was pulling that from the slide that you presented, including automotive sales and automotive rentals, automotive repair facilities. Is that right?
Yes, those are all, uh, current allowable uses in, in PCD. You know, do we want to put a, a used car sale, you know, lot on here? Definitely not. Would we welcome, uh, you know, like on 470 where they have a, you know, the little Mini Cooper? I think that's a very nice-looking, uh, car, uh, car shop, so, I mean, car sales facility. So potentially that, that could be a, a use, although I don't envision it.
And so, and this is for a rezon, so the idea too is that, and this is for all the commissioners, we can very much consider restricting on the proposed uses as well. I want to throw that out there. So in regards to, again, looking at that, those items that I mentioned, and then looking at the comprehensive plan and trying to understand, uh, how this all meshes, besides the height, which I also, of course, am concerned about, as well as the lack of dedicated park space, trail space. I, I will shut up at this point, but I, I feel that this is a, uh, it's just a very urban design. Uh, it's kind of antithetical to Monument. It, it seems to invite what goes against the comprehensive plan in terms of density. I, I think Steve, uh, sorry, excuse me, Commissioner King pointed that out. I believe recently we approved what was then a record setter in terms of density for Monument. And now we're, you know, just months later, being asked to, uh, up that number. So I, uh, I've got great concerns with this particular project and the locations at, but I'll shut up at this point. Any other commissioners would like to add anything?
Uh, yeah, this is, uh, Commissioner White. Um, uh, I was just wondering about, um, uh, and this is, uh, to Mr. Benke, the connectivity to the adjacent development to the Jackson Creek Marketplace. I, I know you've got kind of a, a natural barrier there with the, um, the wetlands and, um, and, and so that, that provides a, uh, presents a problem for connectivity. But what will the connectivity be? Is it only via Jackson Creek Parkway?
As well as cinematic view, which is the, a private roadway that is a part of the Monument Marketplace North Development. Um, so the intersection of Harness and Cinematic View that runs parallel with Jackson Creek Parkway, there is sidewalk along, along that, and, uh, and it connects to the, uh, the Walmart Access Road on the far north side of Monument Marketplace.
Uh, in, in, in looking at and studying the traffic, proposed traffic patterns, do you expect most of the, um, I guess shoppers and residents would, would use the cinematic drive if they're gonna run over to Walmart? Or are they gonna be going out to Jackson Creek?
I could, I could see some of both. You could see some of both, um, you know, because maybe to Walmart, because they, it takes you directly into the back of Walmart, taking cinematic view. But I think anyone that was running to Home Depot and had to, you know, kind of zigzag through Monument Marketplace, uh, would definitely take Jackson Creek Parkway.
Okay. Let's see, I, I think this question is, um, for staff. Debbie, you talked about, um, uh, before signalization, a level of service for Jackson Creek would be F, and then with signalization, it would be Level of Service B.
That's correct.
I, I don't know what that means. Um, can you? I, I don't know what that means. Um, can you elaborate on what those level services means?
A means no congestion whatsoever and F is congested. With B being, B is very low with congestion as well with the traffic signal. And these signals will go in once it's warranted, not right away. If it's one, oh, each project will have its own final PD site plan and they'll have to do their own traffic study and that traffic study will inform staff of when it's warranted to put those signals in.
And, and what is the trigger that equates to warranted? Does it have to dip to level C or D or F or whatever?
It's between D and F, the number.
So it's got to get congested down to pretty congested before a signal would, would be triggered.
Yes. And most of the businesses that want to go in here prefer having a signal, um, for them to go in. So the signal might go in beforehand as well.
Okay. Great. Thank you for that clarification.
Yep.
And then, um, I, one more, uh, comment. I, I noticed in the rendering that, um, what was it? Grand Drive, Grand View Drive?
Grand Village.
Grand Village Drive.
Yep.
Okay. Um, I know both Colorado Springs and Denver have really worked on, on their streets to, to make sure that they take advantage of what is the front range's greatest amenity. And that's the mountains, um, and mountain views. And, you know, down Pike's Peak Avenue and Kiowa and all that, they've, they've got it. So you got a clear view out to Pike's Peak, Denver. Streets, you know, angled so you can, you can see the, the mountain ranges. Um, it seemed like in your rendering that, um, the Grand, Grand Village Road terminated in, in development as opposed to maybe being opened up and having a view corridor through the mountains. Have you guys considered maybe capturing the, the view? And changing the rendering so it doesn't terminate in development and actually have a view to the mountains?
I mean, we have great interest in not obstructing that, that view corridor. Affiliates remain the ownership of, of Jackson Creek Senior Living. You know, we have developed the residential east of Jackson Creek Parkway. And, you know, we have a great interest as, as any of you that might live on this side of the, the highway. Um, and to preserving that view corridor. You know, in those conceptual renderings, I guess we just had not like laid it out to see that there is a, you know, it maintains a view corridor, but we would definitely do our, our best to, you know, if, if Mount Herman or, or whatever we're looking at is right there to preserve that.
Yeah, I, I would definitely recommend that. I mean, if you just think, you know, at the library, if, if you are sitting there reading a book and you can look out the window and have that corridor, you're coming home to your apartment and you're driving. And, and as you're driving down the road, you have that view corridor. I think it really, um, adds to the value of development overall. So just a, a suggestion. Um, and I guess this is really for the, uh, the other commissioners. Typically, um, I, I've been an advocate for, for density. But I, I agree with, um, Chairman Will Halmey that, uh, this, I love the development. But I love it, uh, more in an urban environment. I think that it, it would be fantastic in a, a more urban environment. And I, I just feel that for this, um, community, it does feel a little bit too urban and, and doesn't complement the small town feel that the comprehensive plan is asking for. So I, I, I have to agree there that, um, I have, I have concerns about the, the density and the, the very urban feel. 90 feet to me, um, uh, I know that you've said you, you don't anticipate building to 90 feet. But the fact that it's, it's a possibility, um, i- is very concerning to me. 90 feet would be a significant change to the, um, feel of, of monument. I think just one, I would be a, a significant change to the feel. Um, and then also I, I agree with, uh, Chairman Will Halmey's, uh, point that, uh, the, the comprehensive plan emphasizes trails, connectivity, um, parks. And, and, um, I, while you do have the open spaces, um, on either side, um, they're, they're not highly usable. You know, you can't go and play in, in, in the repairing corridor or the preble, preble mouse, um, area. So that, that's another area where I would be more comfortable with the development. If, um, um, accommodations had made for, for some trails, uh, not just urban sidewalks and, and some parks, green space. So those, those are some of the concerns that I have that I share with my fellow commissioners.
Thank you, Chairman White. Any other commissioners would like to provide input?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Lewis. I just to go on top of what Commissioner White was just saying. As you look at the overall view of that whole corridor itself, you know, these wetlands and these mouse habitats are going to create these peninsulas of, of development. I'd like to see a way as we continue to build this out and it's going to build out, we all know it. To, to interconnect them, whether it be a bridge or a trail that goes over it to connect the, the Walmart area and the Home Depot area. For at the very least, somebody to walk to the restaurant or, or ride a bike. That is something I think you could give to this plan that would help, you know, show that we're trying to interconnect this entire area. Instead of everybody having to go all the way up to Jackson Creek Parkway and walk along that sidewalk to, to do stuff. I mean, this is a community that, that likes to ride bikes, likes to walk to different locations. Um, if we could come up with a way to interconnect it that way, that might help, um, meet the need or the desire of a lot of us on this commission to have, uh, to, to have trails. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lewis. Any other commissioners, um, whether it's, and this is, uh, you know, internal, so to speak, or as well to the applicant, any other comments or questions?
Yeah, Chris, this is Martin. Quick one on here, when I'm looking at this, obviously I'm looking to the north. You still have the Jackson Creek Land Company there, you know, the, the diagrams depicting the area that all the way up to the Higbee Road aspect, that's all controlled by the Preble Mouse, correct? Up to that little niche, all the way up to, uh, what is it? Yeah, right up Higbee. If you follow Jackson Creek all the way up to Higbee, that whole segment up to the north, that's, that's all, uh, Preble Mouse. Is that your restriction?
Uh, no, that's, that's not correct. There's just several hundred feet. On that aerial that I showed you that was in a darker green color, that is the Preble's Mouse Habitat. So there's a significant, uh, remaining, uh, portion of land, uh, from the north boundary of the Preble's Mouse Habitat to Higbee Road that is developable.
Okay. My next question is if you were to put, uh, apartments or a, the facilities inside there, what is your max occupancy there? What is your total number that you anticipate, I guess?
The PD reflects 32 dwelling units per acre for both multifamily and senior housing.
Okay. And then I guess it's leading to this question. Right now, as you look at to the north of Higbee, we have the high school there. How is that going to affect or is the, obviously this the influx of individuals inside there? And I think this is what the other commissioners are alluding to. What is, what is the stance? I mean, obviously within monument, we'd have to make concessions to build more, um, facilities for those multifamilies inside the area. And again, I, you know, obviously it's not, it's one of those questions of, okay, so how do we do that? You know, and that's not a question to you. It's as we're looking at this area now and the district, as we're running into the schooling problems and schooling funding through bonds and everything else that we're faced with. The saturation is always a concern, but again, when we start talking about the education aspect, that's what I'm looking in that area. How are we going to do that? Where are we going to bus it? How are we going to do all those other things? That go in with the saturation of the, you know, the entity. So it, just a consideration, something to think about. As we move in and start looking at that. But it's always a concern as the districts are overwhelmed now as they are. Uh, with the COVID situation as we know, you know, there are those restrictions, but at some point, hopefully everybody goes back to the school and how do we affect those, uh, and, yeah, those individuals as they go forth? I mean, school buses in there, all the other entities that go with it, how is that going to run into the problems as well? And again, just something to throw out there to think about as we go through this, but uh, obviously the congestion there alone on Jackson Creek is definitely, definitely would be interesting. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Trujillo. Uh, any other commissioners?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Light. Correct me if I'm wrong, but what they're looking at really doing right now is changing the zoning, correct? I mean, this is a rendering, this is your dream, this is what you want to do, but for the most part, you have to get past where it's industrial zoned to a PD zoned, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And the zoning that says that you can have 32 residents per anchor, per acre and 90 feet height and stuff. That's in the actual zoning, not in your plans, correct?
We do, yeah, at this point in time, we do not have plans to develop into that density. Correct.
That density is what's in our, or what's in the zoning. The zoning says that that, if you get it zoned that way, that could happen. So that's more on our end. Saying that we'll allow it in the zoning than in your end, saying this is what we're looking for.
Okay.
Okay. That's, that's just what I wanted to know. I mean, yeah, I have a problem with 32 people per anchor. You know, 32 facility, uh, housing per acre, but that's not you asking for that. That's what, just what's in the zoning. If we decide to change it from industrial to what you're looking for through the PD, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. So I think.
That's not true, Eric. Let me, let me.
Okay. That's why I was trying to get this, get this correct. If you can correct me on this.
They're asking for 32 units per acre.
Oh.
Okay. Th- this, this is not zoned for 32 units per acre. It is zoned for 90 feet of, of height. But there's no residential zoning in the current zoning. If we approve this, then they would retain the 90 feet height and 32 units per acre. That doesn't mean we can't ask them to make concessions, right? So, um, and we can, we, we can talk about that in a little bit. I'll let you finish answering your questions, but it's not zoned 32 units per acre right now currently.
Yeah, it's zoned industrial right now, but if we change it to what they're looking for, then that zoning allows it.
The, the, the 32 units per acre is what they're asking for.
Okay.
It's, there's, there's, I don't think there's anything in monument zone for 32 units per acre currently. It's all, um, what they come in and ask us to accommodate them.
Okay. That's what I needed to get clear on because I have no problem changing the zoning out of industrial. I don't think that would work well for a lot of in, industrial use, but I also don't like that density. I just wanted to make sure that was on our end or on their end for the density.
Thank you, Commissioner Light. Anything else, Commissioner Light? I don't want to cut you off.
No.
And yeah, and my understanding is, is Commissioner King's understanding. And really what, what's happening is that what we are agreeing to, including all potential uses, everything that's been teed up by the applicant is effectively what we're blessing going forward. Whether or not they want to do it is a different story, but we are blessing it, whether it's them, whether it's the next owner. That's, that's, I think the, the concern on my end is that there's a very, it's not just the rezone. It's, it's plus. So. Okay. Um, any other commissioners, uh, want to talk or give feedback? At this time?
I'll, I'll step in so we can, you know, kind of understand this. Look, the problem that I have with this type of a project is things change and economies change. And, um, great plans that you have changed. I was involved with a, with a fairly big project years ago and it was supposed to have two tall towers and it was really going to make a statement and, um, 2008 hit. And so they had to change this project from a really desirable project to something they could do just to get out of it and make some money on it. And it really turned into a pretty lousy project, quite frankly. The, 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 the problem is, is that with these type of plans is there's nothing set in stone. So when you theoretically speaking, and we have to look at this and I'm just going to throw out extremes, but if we grant them 32 units per acre, the whole site could be 32 units per acre of apartment buildings. And if it has to be, uh, mixed use, like I said, um, you can look at Inglewood at their city center. They have there, they had to do a mixed use project with apartments on the top and retail on the bottom. And that thing's been in there since probably 2000 and there's probably 30% of those commercial spaces that are still vacant. And they don't care because they have the apartments on the top. You know, Monument Mark, Marketplace already has pad sites sitting there and nobody's buying them. And with COVID and everything else, things have changed. I, I don't know if there's a market for any of this. I don't know if there's a market for retail. I know there's a market for apartments and everybody that comes in here right now is asking for more and more density and apartments everywhere and, um, that whole corridor is going to be apartments here pretty soon. So we just, we need to think really hard about what we, what we allow somebody to do because the best laid plans come back and they have to, they have to survive in the end and they have to make, they have to make money and they have to, um, try to maximize their use and I don't blame them for that. But on the other hand, when this is developed and finished, they're gone and we're stuck with what's left over. So we just need to really think this through. There, it's not zoned residential currently, yet it has a 90 foot height. So, if the height got lowered, maybe the density could go up a little bit. I'd never, I'd never go for 32 units per acre. I can tell you that right now, but, um, there's got to be some trade offs here and, you know, this, this project, in my opinion, kind of needs to go back to the drawing board a little bit. So that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, Commissioner King. I, I echo your thoughts. I think, uh, it's going back to the drawing board, uh, more seriously, more meaningfully, and really internalizing the comprehensive plan, um, for something like this. Again, where I, I'm not opposed to development and I'm not opposed to doing something with that land. It's just the idea that right now I don't see it really mirroring monument as encompassed by the town around it or the comprehensive plan. So that's my two thoughts before, um, any, going any further. All right. And with that.
Do I have an opportunity to, to speak or?
I mean, I'll, I'll certainly entertain a last comment. There is, uh, and I, I didn't do this well. There's typically a spot where we cut off the applicant or at least say thank you. But I'll go ahead, uh, Mr. Brinkley.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I, I guess I would just like to know, it sounds like the opposition is, is mainly as it relates to density and, and height. Which I, I can understand that, that opposition. As for the development as a whole, I mean, what we are trying to create here, I think is, is a fantastic project for the entire area. You know, I think there's civic space and a, and a library and, you know, and, and just, I mean, it's a village-like feel that's walkable and bikeable. That doesn't exist in monument. I don't live in monument currently, but I might want to live here. I mean, this, this is cool. Like I, I don't understand, you know, the opposition towards this development as a whole. So I'd like you to potentially reconsider that first. With the apartments everywhere, and you guys know much better than I do, but right now there's Vista's Apartments. That's 267 units and they're 96% occupied, which is a normal, you know, or else they'd be a hundred if, you know, if there wasn't normal move out. You know, there is a significant demand for. you know, if there wasn't normal move out. You know, there is a significant demand for apartments and for more, you know, housing where people maybe don't want to go buy a five hundred thousand dollar home or they, you know, don't want to commit to that. This is going to be very nice multifamily housing, you know, tuck under garages, a pool, all sorts of amenities, dog park. It's, you know, and just to let you know, we aren't just like in dream phase of the apartments. We've submitted to HUD and we are expecting to get comments back from them and then be extended a commitment here within, you know, within the next couple of months. So we are a ways down the road for a two hundred and fifty-two unit apartment project that again is under twenty units per acre. It's only nineteen units per acre, which is consistent with the vistas in Monument Ridge. So to my understanding, the only other project in the works is Monument Ridge that was approved several years ago and has not broken ground to my, to my knowledge. So for, sorry.
That's all right. Thank you. I appreciate your comments and I will just ask for a conclusion.
Okay, okay. Well, one other thing on the trail connection. So there is the trail connectivity behind, it runs behind self-storage and senior living, which is we dedicated land for a regional trail to El Paso County. So there is a trail connection there. I am all for, you know, additional connectivity. I'd love to see a, an overpass, you know, to get over the Santa Fe Trail and we're happy to talk to Tri-View about that to how to make that happen. So
Okay.
But thank you very much for the additional opportunity to speak and appreciate your consideration.
Sure, thank you. All right.
Just to quickly respond to that, because, I mean, he doesn't really understand all that we have in the works here, but we probably have, I don't know, a couple thousand units on the books for apartments when you consider off Old Denver Road plus the property to the north that, you know, they, they have over twenty units per acre allowed there. So
Commissioner King, we only have the only apartment complex that's currently in the works is Monument Ridge Apartments.
Yeah, I understand, but, but we, we have allowed uses for off of Old Denver Road for, what is there, four hundred and sixty-five units over there?
That's correct, but it's not, doesn't necessarily mean that's going to be going there. A hotel might go there or they might not do it, put anything there regarding multifamily or hotel. It's a possibility of that going there, but it's not a definite yes, that's going there.
Right, but I guess what I'm saying is if all of the apartment units that we approved currently all went apartments and then go something else, there probably would be two thousand units. Is that correct? With between, between that project to the north, that's off Jackson Creek and Old Denver Road.
Alton Center.
Their, their final site plans have not been submitted. Until that happens, it's not approved until
I understand, but, but they haven't approved use for that.
Yes.
Right? Okay. I just, this is why it's, this is difficult when we don't deal in PUDs and and it's, and it's loosely interpreted as far as I'm concerned. So I just want to say, and other commissioners can chime in if they want, because I think that this, this project needs to change and I don't know how to put put a motion together that would even fly with anyone, but I would like to see personally, something under fifty feet high and something maybe twenty units per acre for residential. Because I just have to, I just have to look at what we grant people and it seems like every, everybody says they're not going to do something, but if they have to do it, they're going to do it and we just have to look out for the best interest of the, of the community. So I don't know where to go with that, but that, that's my, that's my personal opinion, what I'd like to see. I like mixed use. I don't have a problem with that. This is, you know, a little too urbanized for me. I'll throw it back to whoever wants to comment.
Yeah, I, I'll jump in. Steve, I, I agree. You know, really what we're doing is we're standing up for what the comprehensive plan has said it wants for Monument. And I, and I think fifty feet high, like you said, and, and a lower density and parks and connectivity and trails, these are things we're not making up ourselves. These, these are all attributes and principles in the comprehensive plan. And I, I think a development of this nature would be fantastic in this site. I think this, this site lends itself to a mixed use and, and some residential and some commercial and some retail. But the way it was presented tonight, it, it just has too many elements that seem out of sync with the, the, the comprehensive plan. If we were to just go down the checklist of the comprehensive plan, it doesn't hit very many of them. Land use, future land use, yes, but all the other really important, more intangible aspects of the comprehensive plan, I think are missing. So I, I too feel like we're kind of playing a game of rock, paper, scissors where rock always wins. Right? And, you know, the zoning is, is the rock and the comprehensive plan, no matter what, can't win. So I, I also struggle with how do we put together a, a motion that articulates and emphasizes our desire to see some of those elements of the comprehensive plan adhere to in a meaningful way.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner White. And I'm going to just, because I think we're getting to the point where at least a motion should be presented. I, I will attempt to present a motion and because similar to what I'm hearing from Commissioner King and Commissioner White, I'm having a hard time coming up with something with certain conditions that would otherwise require. So I'm going to move that the Planning Commission recommend denial of the Village at Jackson Creek preliminary PD site plan and rezone because it fails to meet the following criteria and specifically the failure to comply with or meaningfully consider the Town of Monument's comprehensive plan, including those checkpoints criteria listed on pages sixteen and seventeen, that include but are not limited to a lack of dedicated park trail space, a lack of consideration for aesthetics and the aesthetical well-being of the residents of the Town of Monument, concerns regarding density that would take away from or otherwise interfere with the small-town feel that the comprehensive plan captures as a desire and overall just the quality of life in the surrounding areas of Monument, specifically regarding the views to mountains, that small-town feel in the parks and open space. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Light.
I agree.
Commissioner Martin Trujillo.
I agree.
Vice Chairman Sean White.
Yes, I agree.
Commissioner Steve King.
I agree also.
Commissioner Bill Lewis.
I disagree.
Vice, I mean Chairman Chris Wohomi.
I agree.
This project has failed five to one.
Okay. Going back to the business of the day, it looks like we're now going to just open up for non-agenda public comment. Is there anyone, Drew, online that is looking to make a comment as far as you can tell?
Not at this time, sir.
Drew, I'm sorry, am I allowed to speak?
I believe so. We are open for public comment, but I would leave that up to the chairman.
And perhaps I missed it. I was taking some notes. I apologize, Mr. Chairman. And Drew, if it's not an appropriate time to speak on the Monument Marketplace issue, are you looking at
Yeah.
Now, we're speech on other issues?
We're looking on other issues. That particular issue is now done.
Understood.
So it sounds like no other public comments or other indications of comments are out there. We will move forward with reports, communications from anyone, Commissioner, any reports or communications that anyone, any commissioners would like to relay? All right, having heard none, the staff.
Yes, I don't know if Larry or he wants I, myself to talk about the Santa Fe Trail. Just want to give you an update that the El Paso County is still reviewing the trail proposals, either to keep it where it is or relocate it. They have not come up with a decision yet. And once they do, we will make that available to you as soon as we know. Currently, it's not moving, but they're still making their decision on the potential trail relocation or keeping it where it is currently.
Hey, Debbie, this is Sean. I have a quick question about that. So, you know, I saw your email and understand that there is some resistance in the community about the notion of relocating the trail and understandably so. I don't know if all of them who are opposing the relocation understand the number of cuts and crossings might be involved in what that'll do, but some of them I'm sure are. My question is this, does it have to be a binary decision? Where
Yes, it is the county's decision and it's not the Town of Monument's decision. They maintain that trail?
No, but by binary, I don't mean who has the authority. I mean, in terms of does it have to be an all or nothing relocation? Is it possible to maintain both? Have any, a route that goes to the backside for those who, who want to just cut straight through and leave the current one in place with the cuts?
Yes, that's one of the potential trail relocation design is just to have the relocation for to Nexus Phase Two and Three, for it to go up and behind there, then come back down and finish off where the current trail is.
Okay, so, so there are actually three options on the table. Leave it as is with the cuts. Abandon the one that's there now and reroute or have both. There's a third option. Oh, that's fantastic. Okay.
Those are the three design that, that developer, their engineering firm came up with. And that's what they proposed to the county and the county is still deciding on which design they prefer. The email that I sent you regarding the residents' concern of they would like to keep the trail where it is, they're just, they are opposed to it being near I-25. That's what their concern is. They just rather have it where it is and have the trail crossings that was, had the memo of understanding of the six trail crossings. They'd rather have that than do meander through the development and be up near I-25. That was their concern. It's, it's pretty much split right now with what I've seen on social media and Nextdoor and whatnot. Some people wanted to stay where it is and some people don't. So, but like I said, it's, it's not up to us. It's up to the county to decide.
Sure. So it sounds like the county has in their authority to make a decision that would make both, both camps happy.
Yep. They're, they're trying to do that. They have not come back to us. Mike DeGrant, who is working with Conexus, he has resend the design to the county and the county is still deciding. And he resend that to him about right before Christmas. He sent that to him again, to the county.
Okay, that's great news. I was not aware that there were, there were actually three options. So awesome.
I just had a question for the staff real quick. Our next update from our consultants. When is that?
They haven't informed me when that will be yet. I just recently sent two chapters out to be reviewed. We're getting to the finish line of those, those chapters for review. And once we have all the drafts completed, I'm sure Martin from Plan Tools will be presenting to Planning Commission and to the Board of Trustees as well. He just has not informed us of a date. We are meeting with him next Thursday to go over Chapter Five's comments. Other than that, our next meeting is February ten.
All right, everyone. Again, thank you very much for the nomination and appointment. I will do my best. Just bear with me. And Commissioner White, congratulations as well. As far as everyone, Planning Commissioners, thank you very much for your dialogue tonight. It's civil, it's critical, it's thoughtful, it's exactly what I think the Town of Monument needs. And thank you for your time. So I don't have anything more other than a thank you and take care, stay healthy. See you in, I guess, about a month or so. So I, with that, I will adjourn. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.